Honorable Chairman, Joey Nees of the Board.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight it's truly my honor to welcome each and every one of you to the inaugural meeting of the new Board of Commissioners. As we usually do, I want to start out with prayer tonight. A couple of things to keep in mind if you all could. Mr. Steve Cobble, our Rogue Commissioner, had an accident yesterday. I think Melinda can speak more about this. I think he broke a couple of ankles and is going to have surgery in the next couple of days. So please all, keep him in prayers. And also, Mr. Ron Cowan was having a procedure, so he won't be able to be with us tonight. At this time, Mr. Glenn Reese, would you please lead some prayer?
This is all well. Holy Father, we hum the Bible before your throne. We thank you so much for this day and the blessings of it. This opportunity, Holy Father, we have to come together as the government of this county, Holy Father, to make decisions. And we pray, Your Father, that the decisions we make will be good to better our county, our communities, Holy Father. We just pray that you'll be with each and every one as we strive to serve here this evening. We pray, Your Father, for Mr. Steve Cobble and Mr. Cowan. We pray so much, dear heavenly Father, that you'll be with them during their sickness, their injuries, Holy Father. We just pray, Your Father, we can hear good news from them soon. We ask you, the Father, to be with us this night, watch over and care for us, and give us no failure. For it's in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Mr. Dennis Hackett, would you lead some prayers?
I plead allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Stacy, you can roll call, please.
Jason Powell?
Here.
Glenn Reese?
Here.
Terry Givens?
Here.
Billy Bass?
Here.
Greta Kirby?
Here.
Jason Stewart?
Here.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Here.
Daniel Kribs?
Here.
Dalton Pascal?
Here.
Shannon Michie?
Here.
Erica Evil?
Here.
Ronald Schumay?
Here.
Linda Nixon?
Here.
Kobe McKinney?
Here.
Barbara Knappel?
Here.
Charles Kent?
Here.
Bill Reese?
Here.
Tommy Bane?
Here.
Joey Nixon?
Here.
Dennis Hackett?
Here.
Thomas Gibbs?
Here.
David Gross?
Here.
Frank Woodard?
Here.
Twenty-three present and one absent. Okay, everybody, our first item of business tonight is to elect a new chairman. Customarily, our county mayor has served in the role of Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Since this is the first time in the last sixteen years that we have a new mayor since Mr. Nesbit decided to not seek reelection, I temporarily fill this role for the opening of the meeting tonight. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Smith County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Mason as chairman. Mayor Mason.
Mr. Gross is nominated, Mr. Jeff Mason. Second?
Second.
Second by Thomas Allen Gibbs.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the nomination ceases. Second, and he'd be elected by affirmation.
Motion by Mr. Jimmy Winfrey, second.
Second.
Second by Glenn Reese. Any one speak to the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Chairman, turn the floor to you.
It is an honor and a privilege to serve with you all for the next four years. I am excited about what we will accomplish together. At this time, Mr. Frank Woodard mentioned this before the meeting convened, and I'm glad he did. I'd like for each of you to maybe stand up and say your name and tell us your district, just so the people, your new commissioners, there's a lot of new ones, would be familiar with you, know who you are. Start with District One, who is rolling or District One?
Jason Vail, from defeated Creek, District One.
Glenn Reese, District One.
Terry Givens, District One.
Billy Bass, District Two.
Greta Kirby, District Two.
Jason Stewart, District Two.
Jimmy Winfrey, District Three.
Daniel Kribs, District Three.
Dalton Pascal, District Three.
Shannon Michie, District Four.
Erica Evil, District Four.
Ron Schumay, District Four.
I'm Kobe McKinney, District Five.
I'm Linda Nixon, I'm District Five.
Mr. Ron's on here, so. District Six?
Justin, District Six.
Barbara Knappel, District Six.
Bill Reese, District Six.
Tommy Bane, District Seven.
Dennis Hackett, District Seven.
Joey Nixon, District Seven.
Thomas Gibbs, District Eight.
David Gross, District Eight.
Frank Woodard, District Eight.
Thank you all for doing that. At this time, I will take nominations for Chairman Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Joey Nixon.
I second it. Jimmy Winfrey, Bobby Williams, second. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the nomination ceases, and Mr. Nixon will be elected by acclamation.
Second. Who's that?
Tom Kribs.
I'm in, Dalton. You get that, Dalton? Any discussion as to this? All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? So moved.
Thank you all. It truly is an honor, I appreciate it. Mr. 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 Mr.
This case number is zero zero eight dash two thousand eighteen dash zero zero two. Purpose of the public hearing is to obtain public comments regarding a proposed zoning change to property owned by Daniel and Jimmy Bowes. The request is to change the zoning of map zero four six parcel zero nine zero point zero zero located at two nineteen Dixon Springs Highway from RC Residential Commercial to C one Commercial. The intended use is Highway twenty-five Tire and Truck Sales LLC. The Smith County Planning Commission held a public hearing August twentieth and had one couple with questions only and were okay with the rezoning. The Planning Commission gave a positive recommendation for rezoning to C one. At this time, we'll take any public comments? Any public comments? With no public comments, we'll close that public hearing. And same scenario with this one, on the left, we've got the facility highlighted in, around it in red, and it is residential commercial all around that area. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for proposed amendment to the two thousand three zoning ordinance. The purpose of the hearing is to obtain public comments regarding the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance Article six, section four dash four, uses permitted to add storage facilities as a use permitted to C one. And section four dash one, uses permitted to add customary home occupations to a use permitted in District A one. The Smith County Planning Commission has given a positive recommendation for the amendments. At this time, we'll take any public comments? Any public comments?
Further section of land located on this.
Pardon me?
Further section of land located.
On the zoning amendments?
Yeah.
There's no section of land. It's just a, it's an amendment to our two thousand three zoning ordinance. With no public comments, we'll close this public hearing.
Thank you, Son.
You're welcome.
Item number eleven is a proclamation. Whereas Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome was first described in nineteen seventy-eight and is caused by an insufficient, insufficiency in the TCF four gene and is considered an autism spectrum disorder. And whereas there has been a thousand cases diagnosed worldwide with many cases being undiagnosed, and whereas although PTHS has been associated with severe cognitive impairment, true intelligence is difficult to determine, given to motor and speech difficulties, and whereas at the current moment, there is not a specific treatment for Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome. Now, therefore, the Smith County Mayor, on this tenth day of September two thousand eighteen, does hereby proclaim the month of September as Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome Awareness Month in Smith County in honor of Madeline Dyer Sanders. And therefore, I urge all people of Smith County to learn more about the diagnosis and symptoms affiliated with Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome. And Ms. Madeline and her parents are here, Mr. Jason and Kim Sanders are here tonight with us tonight for this proclamation, so. Go stand up and say hi. Thank you all. Thank you for coming. Moving on, item number twelve is approval of the minutes of July ninth, two thousand eighteen commission meetings. If there are no issues or changes, I will entertain a motion to approve them.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second was Chad.
Second was Chad.
All right, motion is, and second, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Items thirteen through seventeen are committee, are individual committee meetings. Does anybody see any discrepancies or want any of these pulled out for individual votes? Okay. Just presentation, all right. Item number eighteen is for information only as well. It is a presentation of the letter of approval from the State of Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury Office of State and Local Finance and Report on Debt Obligation. It's a form of one thousand, one million, one hundred thousand dollars. This is just for your information. All right, items number nineteen through twenty-one are year-end financial reports. If no one has any objections, we will group these together. If you'd like, we can pull them out. If not, we will, I will take a motion to approve them all.
Motion to approve all three. Sir.
Motion is approved. It's made and seconded. Frank seconded. Jimmy make the motion. And we'll do this by roll call.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Twenty-three, all those. Item number twenty-two is a presentation, it's just a report on debt obligation, CT oh two three form, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars for the purchase of an ambulance remount. Items twenty-three through twenty-eight are resolutions that have already passed and errors reported. Those changes have been made, and I will take a motion to approve the changes.
So moved.
Third, Chad makes the motion, Frank seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, motion passed. Items number twenty-nine through thirty-one are budget amendments approved at the last budget and finance meetings. Joey Nixon can answer any questions to these.
No pressure.
No pressure?
No pressure.
I put you on the spot here.
No, Jason did a really good job in meeting minutes. They could be with us tonight, but if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer where, they all pretty much answered their question finance meeting.
We can group these together unless someone wants to vote on separately.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and approve.
Second.
Second was Glenn. All right, roll call that one. Second.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Items number thirty-two through thirty-five are already approved in this year's budget. Resolution five, six, and nine has a missed, they're called landfill projects, they are not landfill projects. And then Resolution seven does not include the economic life of twelve years of that note. What we're asking you to do is I ask you to approve them as written, and we will direct them accordingly. These can be grouped together unless someone wants them voted on separately.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have number thirty-two voted on separately.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we vote on them all separately.
Do a vote on them all separately. All right, we will do that then. All right, we'll start with Resolution number, item number thirty-two, Resolution number oh nine, two thousand eighteen dash four. It's the authorization of issuance, sale, and payment of a three-year capital outlay note, series zero nine, two thousand eighteen dash oh two, and not to exceed one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, for the purchase of a Caterpillar three twenty excavator.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution four.
Roll call.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
No.
David Gross?
No.
Frank Woodard?
Item phone passes twenty-one to two. All right, Resolution number three is Resolution zero nine, two thousand eighteen dash oh five, and is the authorization of the issuance, sale, and payment of a three-year capital outlay note, series nine, two thousand eighteen oh five, and is not to exceed one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for the purchase of patrol vehicles for sure.
Can we combine thirty-three through thirty-five?
No, we vote it. She wants to vote it separately.
Motion to approve. Second.
Chad, is that wrong? Is that wrong, Chad? Roll call.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Item number thirty-four is Resolution number oh nine, two thousand eighteen dash oh six. It is the authorization of issuance, sale, and payment of a three-year capital outlay note, series oh nine, two thousand eighteen dash OC, oh six, not to exceed thirty-six thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars for the purchase of a maintenance vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Passes unanimously. Item number seven, thirty, thirty-five list, Resolution number oh nine, two thousand eighteen dash oh seven, is the authorization of issuance, sale, and payment of twelve-year capital outlay notes not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars pursuant to the informal bid process for the Bakershot Development Project.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Yes, passes unanimously. Item number thirty-six is approved by the Budget and Finance Committee. It is a letter of intent to purchase from the Bonfide Development Group the property across Rogers Road from our Baker property.
I'll speak on that, Mr. Chairman. This did come before us on last Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Mason said it's the property right across the road from the Baker property. Think the agreement was, when the time was right, it needed to be between five thousand dollars or whatever, we put up no earnings money, we're not tied to anything, it just gives us the right to purchase it when that time comes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Passing unanimously. Item number thirty-seven is another, item that Mr. Joey Nixon will discuss, it came out of Budget and Finance before.
Actually, this is one of the rare, maybe the only time I can remember we've got a budget amendment before you that hasn't came to Budget and Finance. Daisy got in touch with me on August the twenty-third, we haven't been the county commissioner of training the Murphy girl, and she needed to make a budget amendment for drug control vehicle, Eugene or Steven wanted me to answer this, but at the time, we didn't have time to advertise for Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and we wouldn't have a committee by the time it was up, so just want everybody to know that we have not seen this or given any kind of recommendation exactly because, Steven, Eugene, I need your help to know what the actual vehicle was.
Well, what happened was the KDA unit that we presently had was involved in a crash, and it was totaled out. We need to replace that vehicle, and part of that money we're requesting to come from the, from the drug fund, which has to be used in some way, shape, or fashion pertaining to drug, drug involvement. So that's basically it. We need to replace a unit that was involved in a crash.
Mr. Miller, that is appropriate. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution eight.
Any discussion?
Was any insurance paid out on it after the strike?
Yes, about twenty-eight thousand dollars, I believe. No, eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, the remainder is what's worth, please, what's worth the drug?
Right. Hold now, ladies and gentlemen.
Any other discussion? Roll call, Stacy.
Jason Powell?
What is the remainder? Is it in there?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand?
Yes.
It is, that money is of no cost to the taxpayer. It's strictly drug-fucking money, those are key money from fine spays and fortunes.
Fair enough. Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Unanimously.
Thank you all for doing.
All right, and we move on to item number thirty-eight. Budget and Finance has already approved this item as well. It is Resolution nine, two thousand eighteen nine, authorization of the issuance, sale, and payment of a three-year capital outlay note, series on oh nine, two thousand eighteen oh nine, not to exceed one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars for the purchase of an ambulance and three CPR devices.
I make a motion on Resolution nine.
Any, yeah, Kobe. Any discussion? Mr. Crockett's here if you have any questions about what you are approved. He did do a great demonstration of the CPR units, did that nine at the, at the. Roll call, Stacy.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Freddie Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Crebs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Garica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumate?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Passing unanimously. All right, moving on to item number thirty-nine, it is a resolution to declare items as surplus property from our Solid Waste Fund, and Mr. Johnny Lee is here if he wants to tease what those are.
Those are the nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six, she, she's out of Dodge pickup truck, it used to be the old money truck, and just pretty much, leave was all they are. Get rid of them, surplus them up. I can put them on go deals. I don't, thank you, I think you can get more out of them, scrap them, go on go deals.
Mr. Chairman, the Solid Waste Board did vote to give him the discretion of howling sales. I have looked at them, and I'm afraid they'll have to be scrapped.
Okay.
So don't look on the website expecting.
Don't nobody go sit in your hat and own those, right?
And there, there is a bush out in there too, a little bit.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Oh, what?
Second.
At dawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, then we go to resolution number forty. It is resolution oh-nine two thousand eighteen dash eleven. It is an appointment of Mayor Jeff Mason for a term of six years as a member of the Snore Central Solid Waste Planning Board.
Motion to approve. Second.
Ron was saying. Who who made the motion? Stacy.
Thomas by the bow.
I thought I saw Ron saying it, so it's Thomas number one. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number forty-one has one change. You are not approving the Smith County Health Committee. We will present that committee at the committee at our next meeting. And, uh, Ms. Barbara, if you want to speak to that committee, I would be glad to talk to us about why we're not approving that. And you and I discussed it Saturday, but.
We did discuss it a little bit. Um, Michael Railing with the Health Department, Director of the Health Department, emailed me and said that we needed to look at that committee again, that there were some members. We've been meeting almost every month, looking at ways that we can work on the substance abuse issues in our county. And several of those members have not come over a year. So if we could relook at that and get some members that are passionate about what the county do, that it do.
And also, the Emergency Readiness Committee still lists Mr. Elsie Grissom, and he's no longer with us. So we will get that one updated for your approval the next time. At this time, I would have taken a motion to approve items forty-one through forty-eight. And if not, we can pull it, if you want, like, we can pull them out and vote on them separately, or as you ever have them on duty.
Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve items forty-nine through forty-eight. Second.
That's Stewart. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Items forty-nine through fifty-one are from the public hearing earlier. As you heard, Mr. Kinsey, all three passed the planning commission. Are there, is there any discussion? And we'll start with resolution number forty-nine.
Motion to approve all three. Second.
Motion approved in a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Discussing two of these items, I believe, resolution number nineteen and twenty, both are located in District Two. The the last one does not pertain to District. The customer area for these things, when they are in particular District, that District votes first. I ask District Two, please vote first tonight.
Roll call, and Stacy?
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Gribs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Erica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Those passing in. Uh, resolution number zero-nine two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two is declaring two parcels of land, point one-two acres and point-two acres on Dr. James Fisher Circle as surplus property and sell at auction.
Mr. Chairman, like I'm talking a lot, this did come before budget finance a few months ago. We, this is, it's close to where the Rommel Berry is. There's a couple of parts of the land that I think somebody called Mayor Desmond at the time, and we didn't even know the county home of it at the time. It's kind of off the side of the hill, not very useful for us, in my opinion. But budget finance committee names have made the motion decision to sell this.
Basically, the triangle there.
It's a triangle right there. If you know where to turn, you're on the ferry. It's the, kind of off the side of the hill.
Yeah.
The famous statement, when that property sells, that apology is to go back to the highway department, right?
Property's in the name of Smith County, get a second, so go back, go back to the general fund.
General fund.
Yeah. Yeah, Steve researched that. I don't think they're.
We we did discuss that and researched it, and that's what.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve? Second.
Shannon Michie, sir. Roll call, Stacy.
Jason Powell?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Gribs?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michie?
Yes.
Erica Evil?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Kobe McKinney?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifty-three pertains to moving our November meeting from that Monday night to Tuesday night due to the Veterans Holiday that week. I would take a motion to approve.
So moved, a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifty-four is the election of notararies on page one forty of your handout.
Motion to approve. Second.
Your second. Thomas. Don, Tom, Dennis, and then Thomas. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Before we adjourn, we have some announcements we want to make. Uh, Mr. Jimmy, you wanted to talk about the.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, April the twenty-seventh, at set at five-thirty during the courtroom, there will be a courthouse and jail committee meeting. Everybody that's on that.
September.
Sep, did I say September? Everybody that's on that committee will receive a notice and paper. I have also been asked, and it's been requested, that we invite the whole commission to that meeting. If you have not toured this building, we will be doing that that night. It will take, we usually, it usually takes around two hours, maybe a little longer. So, uh, this is something that we do twice a year. We try to meet in September and March. I would recommend that anybody be at all of our committees, but this one especially. This will be a one-time thing for the whole commission. But we would, we do invite everybody to be here at five-thirty.
And I'd urge you, if you can, to be here for that. And, uh, we've also discussed, Johnny, Johnny Lee and I discussed possibly a solid waste committee that we could all get the the van and the bus. And, uh, maybe before the time changes, the next solid waste committee to do a, uh, just a quick tour and a meet out at the landfill so you can kind of see what's going on, and we can talk about what's, you see more about what you're talking about. Frank.
One question, how you plan on scheduling those committee meetings? Are they gonna be like, you always ask, like, five, five-thirty in the evening, or what you, how you plan on doing it?
Uh, I don't, we may have to, you know, on that solid waste, we might, if possible, we might have to do it a little earlier just because of the day, of of losing daylight quicker. Uh, but as far as I'm, as far as I'm concerned, we we would continue. I would, I would, we've entertained and talked about maybe double stacking some meetings where, you know, you have a meeting at five, one at six, and that way you don't spend two of your nights if you're on the same committee, you don't.
Well, if you plan it earlier today, as far as a lot of people make it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I understand that, so we'll, uh. Yeah, well, no, I mean, I don't see anything, I don't think we'll change anything outside of, you'll be, we'll, we'll make adjustments for, uh, if we had to, but no, I don't see no changes.
Will anybody get reminded of this review of the jail?
Do what?
Somebody get a reminder of committee meeting at the jail?
We can do that, yes. I can send, send a letter to everybody. Yeah.
I'll try to give a John Boy tomorrow, and we'll.
Schedule a meeting for that.
We need to do that one before.
And we also.
About daylight.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
As quick as we can.
And we had talked about maybe we could all, at least roads and bridges could do the same way, but I don't, with Stephen being, I don't know what we'll do with that. But, uh, I'd like for those, those three at least, for everybody to kind of see where you, what you're looking at, what what the committees are voting on.
He's already called us.
Yeah, it's Septembers.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth to five-thirty, so if you can, everybody be at that one. It'd be at the road commission, and if we have to, we'll set it up out in the shop, tables out there, if everybody wants to. We'll, what we'll do is we'll send you, everybody, a letter, reminder, this time for the first three meetings. That way you know you have that opportunity to, uh, to come. And one other thing before we do take a motion to adjourn, tomorrow night's meeting in Baxter, if you would, let's meet right here after we adjourn, and let's kind of discuss how we're all gonna get up there and go, and who all's going, and from there.
Well, they usually, they usually have the, uh, Arab Center van. They can use Billy Wood, I think he drove it, Mayor, Mayor Desmond drove it. Had one guy at COVID, we didn't meet at the Elmont complex, man on that rest, on the hill. They usually got in, everybody went on, right up, right up there in front of them. Right in front of the turnpike, on the left of Mary.
Can I, like, what kind of, do we know what kind of endorsement?
They always left around five o'clock, but you need to get up around six, six-thirty.
I think it starts at five-thirty.
Is that where you'll end up?
Starts at five-thirty, so. Is anybody registered to drive the van? Chaz has a.
You don't have to have C D L. You don't have to have C D L.
Fifteen thousand. Do we have a policy that tells us who can, who cannot drive it? I mean, is that something we'd be violating?
Mr. Ask Mr. Bradley, where's Jimmy?
Uh, if I can speak, uh, you don't have to have a C D L to drive the van, but, uh, according to county policy, uh, they want you to go through the safety training and be trained for that. And so there's only five or so people on payroll that have that. Some of the, uh, I'm not sure if the maintenance guys went through it this last time, but I think Sherry is qualified to do it. So, uh, you you do have some folks.
We've been on such short notice, Mr. Chairman, we may just want to get together and car boot.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll work that out.
Well, uh, does anybody on the commission, would you be willing to take that training course, and we can get that set up through Sherry? And it's Hackett.
Is that tomorrow? Is that tomorrow?
No, not tomorrow, but somewhere down the road. We'll, for, if, more in the future, if we need this used van, we'll, uh, you'll have that approval. Dennis Hackett, Chaz, anybody else?
I'd be interested if they would ride with me.
Bring lunchbox. You bring a lunchbox. You bring a lunchbox, you ain't probably. Kobe in too? All right, Kobe, get in.
No, I, I didn't say so. Um, in years past, with the new commission, we're taking group photo.
Okay.
Do we plan at the, uh, next meeting to give everybody a little warning, to maybe dress up a little bit, if everyone too? And, uh.
They're not dressed.
Smith County insider will be providing free headshots that night. Anybody wants to get a headshot, maybe we'd like to get one of everyone.
And that'd be for our November meeting?
Yes.
Any other discussion as far as that? So we're gonna meet right here and try to figure out how it's going to go from there.
How many motion we adjourn? Second.
Kobe, what's first?
I have one thing I wanted to say before that.
Okay.
And, uh, Joey Camp out is, uh, and, uh, Mr. Madison, we went with the last month, month before last. Anyway, we took a trip to Nashville to take operations on headquarters. Me and, uh, Mr. Joey Daisy, former Mayor Desmond, all three of the mayors from the municipalities met with these road projects on Highway twenty-five and up Highway seventy in South Carthage. And that was probably, what, Joey thirty, y'all was thirty-five, three, three back learning. You know, we we had pretty good pool room in there, and we got to explain our concerns and stuff. And Joey, if you want to give them an update on what T-Dot told us is going on.
Yeah, I, I think T-Dot was just in the preliminary phases of trying to figure out about the blood from South Carthage. And their initial response to us was to deter traffic back to Lebanon, which, on, I told them that was not a very good thing for emergency services and everything else for our counties, you can imagine. We talked to them about, uh, I went blank here. Blair Road, uh, that runs below the blood, below Gordville's sewage system in South Carthage, to maybe temporarily open that up. Mr. Steve Cobble was there too.
Steve, Steve was there, and one of the things they brought up too, that y'all familiar with it, was deter traffic, all traffic, including trucks, trailers, everything. Down Holden's Creek to County Road and back across, we said, no, we can't, we can't afford it, we can't do that. So one of the T-Dot engineers hit them up with an idea of maybe keeping it down to one lane, putting the concrete barriers up with what, an eight or twelve-foot fence to keep the rock, and probably put up red lights and keep them going that way. But when that happens, and they're up there working, they will have Coast Guard on the river. There will be zero river traffic. There will be zero traffic on Highway seventy or the detour road if it goes under the bridge, because they're not being responsible for none of that. So it's gonna be a pretty long, lengthy process. And the way they talk, they wanted to give Smith County a so-called break between the Highway twenty-five project and the Highway seventy project in South Carthage. The, you know, the engineers can set up the detour, you know, everybody gets to ride around down by the sewer plants, you know, get it, see the sewer plants off of it, so, you know.
Right.
You have one question, if if it destroys a sewer plant over, is the county or the one that does the contracting gonna pay liable for it? The county reliving?
I'm not sure about that. The, the, the discussion was very preliminary. I think what the dates they gave us was, you know, they're speaking to finish this project in October twenty eighteen. I think as we all know, they've expected it many times, it's still not happened. So I, if it gets by October twenty eighteen, that'll probably be the earliest. They give us one year reprieve, which puts us to October twenty nineteen at the earliest. We're realistically looking at twenty twenty. They gave us our, their assurances that they would come to Smith County and talk to us before they made any decisions. So I think it's, obviously, we've got to start preparing, but we got time to prepare everything.
Did they, what reason, they really wanted to clean the blood? Was it, was it to turn up a lot of cars, or what?
Just to save.
No, I.
Basically, it takes the time off, is what it is. Just, you know, get anything, or, you know, so, that's, that's where we're at.
Yes.
At that meeting, and like I said, all the mayor and the mayor and me and Joey, we had a, hopefully, we'll.
Well, yeah.
We've already talked to Jim, we're gonna stay on them, they're gonna, they're worried, they're gonna come upon us, because that side of the county will be cut off if we don't make sure of this.
If we lose western half of our county, then we may never get them back, because they're gonna live. And that's tax, that's the money out of our pockets in tax revenue and emergency services and.
You can go down this fall in the city of South Carthage, it's gonna split it right in half.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
During the detour, everybody's ever traveled that Sanders Road or County Road of the, you know, it's, it's one-lane traffic.
Steve was supposed to do us some measurement on that.
Yeah, that's something we talked about.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Get him back to the wheel.
Yeah, once we get him back. He may, he may do it in a wheelchair, not with Steve.
Us were, us were setting time on that end of the county, and all EMS service coming down that way too.
Right.
Something else we might need to look at too is temporarily fixing the U M S. Placing her to all this is resolved. My solution on that was is that Mr. Crockett, you know, try to set up for something with, um, the pavilion over there, and staging ambulance at the pavilion, and that would give them maybe room to, I mean, bathroom, cell, you know, room to sleep or whatever while this is going on.
Can the county, can the county, our state refuse to do it?